A meeting to order, um, welcome you to the uh, May twenty first two thousand twenty four. Meeting of the zoning board of the town in Kenan Dewa. And we'll begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our troops and then we'll go over to. Our procedures, you don't have anybody on Zoom right now, but if anybody comes in by Zoom, uh, they will leave their mics muted. If they need to wanna be recognized, uh, they can get Mike's attention, you can unmute their mics. Our procedures are that the applicants for variances will come to the stand there, identify themselves and tell us what they're. Would like to do, uh, and why they would like the variance stranded. After they have done that, we we can ask questions, um, they can ask questions back and then uh. Nobody there, but then I'll I'll ask for anything from the audience. Uh, and then if there's no further comments and the applicant is is agreeable with closing the public hearing. We can do that and then we have sixty-two days to make a decision, but we'll typically make uh. Our decisions and vote on the variances uh. And you're welcome to stay around for any discussion that we have and uh. Okay, let's get started, uh, let's see. You know, uh, CPN twenty-four oh six T's Daniels four three three seven eight Ballbrook Park.
Anybody?
They don't come, we may have to just have them reply again, this is the second. Okay, new public hearings, uh, Mary Ellen Cuthbert, the Tory and Terrence Wademan, County Road sixteen three three one three. Tear down of existing residents and construction of new single-family residence. Side setback of twenty feet is needed where five feet is proposed and twenty-five is required.
Yes, Logan Rockcastle, Mars Engineering. Um, you mentioned that it's a full tear down, but uh, things have changed since the original application, this is not a full tear down. It's more of a, in addition to the rear of the house and uh, kind of an expansion of the garage. So the variance is going to be for the garage getting two point three feet wider. To accommodate more storage, having more room for a two-car garage instead of the limited stores they have now. So, um, not sure if you've seen the site plan or been to the site. Um, existing garage is seven point three feet to the property line, which is. Uh, not the standard that the town would like to see. My client has gone back and forth with the architect to kind of be more accommodating to having a five-foot setback. Which is more in line with what has been approved by the town um, on previous projects. With the garage getting wider, the driveway is going to get a little bit wider to accommodate uh, inflow and outflow. Cars going in the garage, it's, we're not expanding the driveway anymore than it is now. Um, so we don't need a variance for that. We have put in place trade stuff, which is more in line with site plan review, but we. Actually don't even need site plan review, if we get this variance, they'll be able to move forward with getting uh, building permits and things of that nature. Uh, so if you have any questions based on what we're proposing, I'm happy to answer them.
There are no other way that you can figure to keep it.
I mean, the only way to push the garage. Uh, not impeding on the current setback is to demo the house and cost factors. Uh, that's what they were initially going to tear down and rebuild, but based on the pricing. They've chosen to kind of rehab the existing house, put an addition on and try to. Uh, alleviate extra costs and this is what we came up with as a plan to. Get more space for them without impeding on uh. That northern lot line, more or less.
The homeowner contacted me concerning this, I work on this. Uh, she was also did not want to do the full tear down because of the proximity to the lake. She wanted it, make this little disturbance possible, so this was the federal alternative she had before. She said everything down, start over, she said, this is gonna be easier and cheaper and she didn't need as much disturbance, so.
So what you're proposing is that in sync with what we have in front of us? I'm not sure what's in.
Oh, no, it's not like it's changed since. The description changed as far as having a full demo of the the house and rebuild. We applied. Once and then changed it based on uh, having talks with contractors and things of that nature, so it was kind of preemptively. Given to the town and then we kind of came back and got a new game plan and this is our game plan now is to save the house. But still having an expansion of the square footage.
Well, I'm just asking because. If what's published is what we have to.
Okay, so it's less than what was publicized, okay, so that's what my next question was to. Is so you're. You're saying a twenty-foot variance was requested, but what now, so what?
This, that's what we're requesting, it's it, yeah, it'll be five feet, the new garage will be set five feet away from the property line.
Okay, so it's just the garage and not the tearing out?
Yeah, that's correct, it's it's more or less just for the garage portion of the.
Uh, actually, no, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry, it's, they're only moving it two point three feet over from the existing mountain form. But because they're moving it over, the side variance is, it'll be twenty-five feet, it's gonna be five feet.
Which was publicized, right?
The variance is correct in the way it's described, the only thing that's kind of off is the full demo.
So how big is your garage?
It's twenty-three feet wide.
Do you know if there's other properties in the neighboring area that are similar or different, I mean?
I don't know, I haven't looked at that area, but I know around the lake and other projects that I've done. Five feet is the standard, we don't, we try to keep it, it's kind of an issue of fire code. Because if another building were to impede on that property line, you need at at least ten feet. Of access between two properties and that we're trying to keep that in in place.
Aren't there any that are five feet, other than like Sandy Beach?
Ballbrook's a big one.
So how big is the existing garage?
That would be one team, something.
Then that difference between the existing garage and what we're asking for is two point three feet. So we're asking to make it two point three feet wider than the existing garage. So that we can park two cars comfortably side by side. It 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 would really make it a two-car garage, side by side.
Would you give your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Mary Ellen.
But it's, so what we're asking, so wait, would you, what was, you were saying, what is the current?
Right, and it's.
Dimensions.
Two point three be smaller than the twenty-three, so.
So when you take this uh, existing garage out, are you taking the foundation out, are you taking existing concrete?
I imagine that there you're, there'll be a full demo in order to put a footer. Underneath that that wall, so the footer will be expanded, but they're trying to. Keep as much of the structure as they can as far as footprint, as they're meeting up with. Here, main wall, though, it'll be expanded here. You can see this red line is the existing garage, so all foundation work will be. In that area.
Any response from the neighbors or anything? Well, we'll call you.
Obviously, pre-existing, um, on these on both sides.
Yes, it seems to be that way, yes. Okay, uh, any comments from the audience?
Did you all get a chance to, I'm Kathy Raefern, I live next door, uh, just to the north. And um, did you all get a chance to read the letter that I submitted? I think, I don't know exactly, it was in April, um.
Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen sent me an email with the plans and said, let's talk, so I called her. And we had a very cordial conversation and I told her I I did not want this to happen. Because when I bought the home in twenty sixteen. The house and I have the old flat, um, what's it called, the title work or whatever that shows all the history. Um, and I read it thoroughly, um, the house, my house was built in nineteen fifty-five, fifty-six. And the family owned the land that covered the property where Almyra Bathrick's house was, was, which is the house they bought. And then to the north were uh, another neighbor has a house. And um, that neighbor and the the people that own my house had land down to the lake. And my understanding was there were black Angus cattle and whatnot, and then they sold off lots along the water. And then they sold a big square uh, to the Cootrees and they built a beautiful house there. It's a big rectangular lot that goes street to street and then in fifty-seven, uh. The house north of me and the Bathrick's house was built nineteen fifty-seven. And at the time, I don't know what the rules were, but there probably weren't any laws or whatever about how close you could put the house. And um, I was made to unders- be under, uh, to understand that the property line, um, between our houses. Was seven feet from each of their houses, my house is is much farther from that. And when I bought my house, I too wanted to build more room for the garage. And I looked into it and I, it was all, I got the okay from the town and I, you know, had an okay and I was gonna build a side load three-car garage. And then I realized what I needed was a big shed and I was going to create. A terrible situation for my neighbor to the north, um, Lauren, and she would be. Dealing with this huge structure, which would kind of block part of her deck and whatnot. So I opted to instead keep my two-car garage from nineteen fifty-five and then I uh, went through. The town and put a nice shed, big size shed. Uh, on the side of my property and that's what I did instead of building a bigger garage. And I have photos, if you wanna see them, that to come two foot closer to the property line and make it five feet. Or five feet and inches, it's just too close, I've got a tree right there at that corner where the garage is. And it's magnificent and it's super tall, real big tree and it will be impacted by this build. Uh, if that property comes out any closer, that those tree roots are gonna be impacted negatively. Um, and I have a fence around my backyard, because when I moved in, I had a dog. And uh, I decided not to build my fence near the property line. Because topographically, if you've been to the properties, you, if you look down from this, from Westlake Road, you look down between the two houses. They both have hills in the back and the houses are kind of, those three houses are kind of built like on three little hills. And um. So topographically, I put my fence coming up for the backyard, not on the property line, but following the topography. Because it looked better, I didn't need to have even more backyard fence, I have an enormous backyard fence. And the park, it's not fenced, it just looks better for the neighborhood to not have my fence covering. Right up to seven feet from their house and um. And on the east side, I had dealt with Doug Finch and he had told me to build my fence on the east side, which ordered Mrs. Cootree's property. He said, build it in three fence, three foot from the property line, then you can control what happens the other side of your fence. And I thought, well, that's a good idea, you know, and he's, he knows where I do, so I took his recommendation and did that. And then subsequently, after Mrs. Cootree died, the people that bought that house put a fence in and now there's a three-foot gap. Between the fences, which the neighborhood deer use as a, a path, which is really worked out loud. And, you know, so I'm really happy that I did that, but I still maintain ownership of that land. So I'm really good to my neighbors and I really felt terribly when I talked to you guys. Cause I don't want to say, I don't want you to do this, but I don't want them to do this. Um, the way they are saving, you know, if if they need a two bigger than. Cause Mrs. Bathrick and Mr. Bath, Dr. Bathrick had big cars. Um, Mrs. Bathrick talked constantly about her fifty-seventh turquoise Chevy. Uh, that she was very convertible and she was very happy to drive around and and Mr. Bathrick had a big car and they both fit. But there isn't a lot of storage left and that's why I built a shed and the sheds were built perfectly. Um, now I'm down to one car, so now I get to park in the middle of the garage.
And and I think actually, did the shed, what was, what was the reason you had to come before us for a zoning, a variance? It was for a sign, the side side.
And I had, the fellow came out from the town and he told me where to build the shed. So I hired a guy and a thousand dollars to put in a pad, a compressed stone pad. Then it turned out he'd made a mistake and I shouldn't put the pad there, cause it was next to the porch. So I had to spend another thousand dollars to have that torn out and and the pad moved over. Which I wasn't crazy about, but, you know, everybody's human and they make mistakes. Um, but my shed, it just looks nice, it goes with the house, it's, I keep the colors the same as the house and um.
Shed on the north side of the house there?
It's uh, north side, yes.
Yeah, and before that, that was put there, there was a tree there, which I hesitated to take down, but it was sickly and when they opened it up, it was full of cement. So the people before me had tried to save the tree just by filling it with cement and it it really worked, because it looked like it was doing okay. So, and I I try to not lose trees, I try to maintain them, um, I deal with arborists all the time on my property and. Um, I don't want to lose trees, I planted eleven trees since I bought the home in twenty sixteen. And I made care to buy things that were, you know, that were trees that are from this area. Um, but I wanna put trees in to help with the the flow of water that's flowing down into my neighbor's yard on the east side of me, she's down the hill. And she gets hit. And uh. So right here is where the deer run and then if you. But this is my house, so you wanna go down. There, okay, so I have a really big tree right here and any closer. Uh, any digging here will impact the loops fairly and it's a super tall tree. I own the tree here and the thing that's really squirrely about this property, and and I've talked to you guys about it, is that this. This property line angles. It angles, so by the time it gets to the street, it's like one foot from their driveway. And again, that's why I didn't put my fence on the property line, because I didn't wanna. Make it look funny at their house, at Almyra's house. Um, but I really do not want this structure coming any closer, I certainly don't want a property. It's already seven feet deep property line, I don't think it should get any closer. And I I feel bad, I wish that I told you. You that I wished we had talked when you bought the house or before you spent money on plans, because I know that costs a lot of money.
Well, I can, if I can just respond a little bit.
Kathy, you go ahead and finish your.
Oh, sorry, um, I know this is, uh, they wanna have the the normal, modern garage. Not the way garages were, like how my garage is. Um, so, that you know, it does call, if they wanna keep the garage in the same location and not flip it to the other side. They they literally just have to build the garage this way. And instead of coming closer to the property line, they need to come this way two feet. And I know it's more expensive, but that's.
It's significantly more expensive.
And 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 disruptive, we have to.
We want everybody to address their questions to the board instead of.
So, um, I know it's tight, but this isn't a build of a lot nowadays. Because of how narrow this is, you couldn't build that house today. And you couldn't build the house north of you. And when I tried to alter my house, I realized that a shed was the answer. To needing extra space and having places to put stuff and it's worked out really well and it was far cheaper, so. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So I, what I was gonna add to that is I've been working with the architect since last November. We designed the garage every which way we could think of. On the north side of the house and turning it ninety degrees to the house. But because of the lot lines, the garage would have to come to the middle part of the house. It would be the, it would be the house and if we flipped it around. To come off the south side of the house and make it ninety degrees off the front elevation. It totally changed the interior footprint of the house, so now you're not oriented towards the lake, you're you're sort of oriented. Away from the lake. And 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 it just, trying to keep. The existing foundation and changing the floor plan entirely. Just didn't work, I mean, we we tried putting the garage. Both sides of the house, turning it around, it just, it just wasn't gonna work, the least impact to the site. Is to ask for the two feet. And it's the most cost effe- effective solution to trying to renovate the house. If we take the two feet from the inside, it's a lot of foundation work. And it it's a, it's a significant cost to do that.
Yeah, that interior wall, well, there's a, I have a floor plan, this interior wall is a. Load-bearing wall, so in order for them to push this over, it's significant foundation work in the basement and everything else. To accommodate that, so it's a lot easier to move. Little over two feet this way without impacting. The existing structure. That's the the main reason why we're trying to push it up. The other way than go interior, I mean, we've gone back and forth on many iterations of this uh, ar- architectural plan and this is. The least impact on the site and impact on the existing structure.
Is there a basement under the existing house?
In a less expensive world, it it could be done, but the cost of construction these days. Is considerable.
Is there any more questions that can help answer?
Logan, I think the existing garage door is about sixteen feet wide or fifteen feet wide. He he has a pickup truck, it 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 would be, you could possibly fit the two cars side by side, but you would be um. Frouting out the back window, I, if if you wouldn't be able to open the doors.
Right now, we're proposing twenty-foot wide door and.
One door.
Yeah, traditional parking spots are ten by twenty, so you're thinking. They're, you're parking in a, like a parking lot, if it's. With the way it is now, it's significantly less, so parking two cars together, even nine feet is like the minimum that. Uh, most parking lots have and it's far less than that. So it's trying to make it so if you're in the garage, you can navigate around the cars. This is the best option that we've come up with.
Any else have any questions? You want to present anything else or are you comfortable closing the public hearing? Do you have any?
I mean, we would really like to have the garage because we we feel that for the investment in the house and what we've already paid for the house. And the additional construction costs, to have a garage that can accommodate two cars comfortably. Would make it make sense.
Can I skip the man price?
I really feel for them, I wish they had knocked on my door before they bought the house. Or knocked on my door before they initiated plans, um. I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to impact my property. Um, in order to maybe make their garage bigger, um, my value of my home. Would be impacted because that house would be, um, I've got photographs, when I look out my windows, that garage is right there. It becomes two feet closer, it's significant and the other thing that's that's different is that. Almyra had a. Almyra, Almy- what? I'm trying to get Almyra's or their house, Almyra has a, I'm sorry, I just, you know, the lady lived there before. She has a screened in a summer porch, but it's got electric heat, but she never used it when she was out with them. And their home is gonna, their, this property is gonna, this structure is gonna come two feet closer to that property line. So there's only gonna be three feet instead of five, which five is.
I'm sorry, that's incorrect. We're gonna be five feet from the property. We're asking for two feet more onto the garage.
So that you, it's gonna seven, it'll be five feet.
Correct.
Okay, sorry about that, and so this.
And it is only at that one corner of the garage, because the farther back on the garage.
Right, but the point I'm trying to make is, which I'm not doing a good job. Right, but the point I'm trying to make is, which I'm not doing a good job. Um, is that they're going to, their structure is now gonna be like this. And there's not gonna be this indentation, so this entire structure is gonna be two feet this way. Compared to what it is now. Which puts it real close, much closer to my house. And if you were able to go, if you can go to the site and look, you'll see. How close the houses will be then, but I I just don't feel. That, and I feel badly for the situation you're in, but it shouldn't then become my problem. You know.
With all due respect, Kathy, I I don't think your house is that close.
Okay, let's um. Okay, you, um. Is there any, any new information that you can give us? We we, you know, consideration of your disapproval is one of the things we certainly will take. Or any consideration is this.
Really don't want this to happen, my neighbor's in the more north. Um, told me she agrees with me, but that doesn't matter, this is not impacting her as much. Um, my neighbor across the street, Rick, uh and Jeanie, they don't want it to happen, but they had a. And Rick was coming tonight, but he had a family health emergency tonight, so we couldn't come. And it doesn't impact them directly the way it does me, but they don't like the idea of it either. Just on principle, so, sorry.
Thank you. You have anything further?
Um, in addition, the tree that Kathy's referring to. It it sits far enough away from the garage then. I I I don't imagine.
One big tree. Towards the back of your house.
It's on the side jack.
Yeah, that over.
It's in my fence lines.
Overhangs a property line, isn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, but no, it it kind of just overhangs my fence. Um, but the tree I'm talking about is right next to their, in front of their garage. It it's um, it's in my side yard still, but it's towards the front of the house, it's a burst in the back of the house. And I own the tree that is up front, right by their driveway. These trees are, I don't know, I I suspect they would put in in nineteen fifty-five, so.
I don't think it.
They're pretty much sure.
Okay. Anything further, anybody that?
I looked at it, it's gonna have to be trimmed either way, it's typically over a property line. If if you think about it.
Well, I don't mind.
I I I don't know the.
Trees are trimmed if they're over property line, aren't they? Okay, so, okay.
I understand all the trees in my yard.
Yeah.
Trimmed.
I don't think it's a specimen, a special kind of tree and it looks.
Okay, um, comfortable is presenting, so we'll be presenting. And we'll close the public hearing, um, everybody okay with that? Uh, we have sixty-two days to make a decision, uh typically we'll make our decision tonight. You're welcome to stay around for any discussion. Uh, let's see, next one. He weighed four one four eight, County Road sixteen. Applicent is proposing construction of a ninety square foot paper patio next to an existing shed. Lot coverage variance of one point two percent requested in addition to.
Look, could you bring this picture up that I put in?
Okay, just one second.
I'm sorry, car.
In addition to the twelve point one percent lot coverage variance previously granted as fifty-three point three percent is proposed. And forty percent is the maximum. Grants for a third accessory structure requested when one, in addition to a garage is permitted in the RDL, RLD. Great, yes.
So I'm here tonight to apply for a couple of variances to put this ninety square foot permeable paper. The base of the papers would be sand, not gravel. Um, if you can see the wall in the back, um, and the plantings, those were all just put in. Water was coming down the hill from the house in the back up there, this is my house to the left. And water was coming down when it would rain, well, that come through there, so we decided the neighbors and I that we was put wall and we put it planted and washed there. Um, Janet and Michael Wilson went to. The, excuse me, the right of my house, I have a letter that they're not opposed to this, uh left. Um, new neighbors came in, I can't remember their names, Bruce. They also wrote a letter and turned that in and they're not opposed. Um. I don't know what else to say about it.
Why wasn't this included with the original?
Because it was such a mess with that shed. You know the story.
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
And it was, you saw, you know, your whole administration change, people were telling me, I mean, it was a nightmare and costing eighty thousand dollars a legal piece. So, that's why we put the shed up. Um, the overhang was approved, but what happened is I bought a table. To eat at, the table doesn't fit over the overhang, it's too big, so I wanna put the table there. And.
Think the. Didn't the previous extension out covered that had table chairs on it?
No, it didn't. It wasn't, if they just finished building this, with the area, I mean, this is just all of this.
Reason you can't put a table on chairs there.
Doesn't fit. That's why I wanna put that little. And a grill. And a chiropractor against the wall.
Just open, just an open patio as we are saying.
So just the permeable papers on sand. Chiropractor, you know, the wall right here, this will be the papers, just right here. So this is dirt, where there's grass seed planted up. Um, all the plantings and grasses and stuff. Um, if you can see the little bushes there, those are all gonna be pretty high. The grasses that got stage, so I think that that will help if erosion in water is your concern. Um, I've done nothing, but I bought this house seven years ago, I put a lot, money into it to make it look aesthetically nice. It was very rundown. Um, I do things top notch and. I would really like to finish off, you know, the project with this.
Anybody have any questions?
If you, um. I know it's a paperwork that I submitted, if you, I'm sure you all know what permeable papers are. Let's get explained.
So, so the. I I guess I'm forgetting, so what happened with that side, what, can you give me a little, little history, I mean, like, so you said that.
I had what was approved and what, so I'm a little fuzzy on.
Last year? Was it last year?
Well, it was, yeah. It was a shed that was existing that I, we tore down and we started, we got a permit to approve it.
Okay.
Someone from town, I won't name names, approved it and gave me a building permit, I got halfway done and you pulled it. For several reasons.
Oh, confusion about the size of the shed. There was a patio.
There was a.
From there, covered patio.
There was this, the shed, it was pretty much where it is now, which is over here. And we tore out, there was a whole lot of papers there. We tore them all out, so none of the existing papers that were there before are there except for. A small overhang. Here.
The same plan line.
So we took out a ton of hardscape.
Forgive me for my lack of homework, but what is he, I'd be curious to hear what the ECB says about this one. ECB's uh was concerned about the lack of. Grass, okay.
But they still don't address the permeable, permeable paper. I still don't have it. Wow.
Is that, are the papers around the fire pit?
Yes.
Um. They included in the light block coverage line? Yes, that was all. How how long is the? Building now, the, the storage shed plus the. Covered patio?
I would have to go back.
I think it was.
I'd have to go back on that paperwork from many half ago to see.
I think it took it up almost twice.
It's in, it's ten by, it's a hundred square feet. Without the overhang.
That's, but the overhang was another, maybe five square feet, so the overhang wasn't a sign, wasn't a small area.
No. You guys, anybody have any questions?
Bye.
Uh, we have a a shed of, of the overall shed like we've done with the other ones where we this.
Right there.
Yeah, thanks. Could you explain, uh, point, point out on?
Where the shed is?
This is old.
As adults.
Yeah.
I can't. I can't even decipher it. Yeah, over here, I guess.
Yeah, um. You can see the old shed there.
I went back to the, all the diagrams from the floor, there was like sixty pages of stuff. I had bring the old, I didn't think we were talking about the old shed.
We're not talking about that shed, but. We're not.
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're all. I think I got a better picture.
Now, that's, that's the current, you can see that the actual covered patio is actually bigger than the shed. The storage shed.
Yeah.
And so it's ten by. Ten by twelve.
But like I said, we took. We took out a ton of papers, some of the old tear downs here.
My concern is yourself up at fifty-three percent.
I understand. I understand, this is.
The other, other thing that's difficult with property like this is it's split by the road, so you have. Coverage issues right down by the lake, but you're also, you know, you're, and the whole thing is including lot coverage.
Right.
But. Skewed one way or the other, depending on how they're.
I'm confused, but I don't know how to ask my question. I may not. So the the need for the papers is because the over.
The overhang, what, what I did is.
There's a picture that I have on, like, from four.
I ended up putting French doors that open like this, so you walk up to the shed. There's no room, once the French doors open for anything there.
And there were papers.
But I want, this is as much that you're checking your math too. As it is that covered patio is a ten by twelve, it's a hundred and twenty square foot, you're only asking for ninety square. Yes, so. Like I said, I I have a question and I don't know what my question is, I'm just a little confused because the math doesn't add up.
Wait, say that again, so. The hundred square foot and then I.
Hundred and twenty going down to ninety was just thirty square feet. Right, 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 right.
Cause she's not doing the full.
It's probably not.
Currently, there's a, yeah, ten by twelve, right.
Right.
Small.
My, but, but yeah, my point is if a hundred and twenty square foot is too small. And that's gonna be fixed by adding ninety instead, doesn't make any sense.
Well, the table and all the stuff will go, but it doesn't fit under there, we'll go over there. Because now I can't.
Well, I know French doors are a lot, yeah.
Yeah. The doors open this way out.
Yeah.
That's what.
Three by ten. Thirty.
So what are, so what are you saying, you don't, the math doesn't? I mean, if she's only doing a partial. Um, paper patio, is that?
Like I said, I don't know how to frame it as a question, it just doesn't make sense to.
If one hundred and twenty square feet isn't working, how's ninety?
Yeah. Because I I know French doors quite well, you know, you've been to my place, I've got them all over the place.
Got the back area, the side area.
Three times ten is thirty, you're still at ninety, it's the same space that you'd be getting with the thing, so just stick the stuff that you think you're gonna stick there, sticks there. Otherwise, it doesn't fit here either.
Get sliders. I used to have French doors in my, I had sliders.
They not need. Not. Be able to have as large a table and chair.
Well, and it's part of why I bring it up is make sure that's, you're asking what you actually want to and that's, you're not putting yourself in too small a spot, again.
You know, that's. That's, that's gonna work for me, we talked about over the contractor and I and. It's much less than I had before, but it'll work.
It's not covered.
No.
No.
Anybody in the audience have?
I don't think there's anybody around, so.
Have you presented everything you wish for them? Anybody have any further questions or the? Comfortable closing the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
More. Close the public hearing, we have six days and we'll make a decision, we'll try to make it tonight. Welcome to stay around for the discussion.
I'll leave you some time.
Should I leave so you can talk?
Nice.
It's a public hearing.
It's recorded anyway.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I ever can't sleep, it's all on you do.
Once we close the public hearing. You cannot give further.
Information.
We have to real, we have to real. Okay, let's just go back, um, I think we need to send a letter to. Daniels Ford that they're gonna have to reapply again, I guess.
Have they ever said that they were not gonna show? This time or last time? Man, they don't need it now.
Since Mrs. Wade is here, so let's go to that one first.
Personally, it's pretty tight in there, I don't.
I I don't understand how a permeable paper can be considered an accessory structure.
Well, you're talking about, which one are you talking about?
Well, there's, yeah, there's that, plus.
Oh, you're doing this one, or?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were doing the other one.
Oh, no.
We're doing the last one.
Yeah.
Any other part of that is.
Two, you have two variances we need, one is for a third structure, which. Audio qualifies as, I don't ask me to.
No, I know.
I would love to, to know the.
But the other is a lot coverage that it entails.
But what's, the issue to me, again, if this is concrete slab or a building.
Right.
Um, and you know, permeable savers and I had. ECB says more grass. Well, I'm looking at this, this is gonna be less intrusive to the lake than grass clippings. That, you know, where are you going to go with that?
Well, they, they haven't even really classified like the, I mean, they haven't addressed the whole permeable solutions yet.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think that the, at some point, time to town needs to, to visit this because it's a completely different issue for the lake and.
Yeah, if the whole lake did it, we wouldn't, right, I mean, it's better for the environment.
I, I think the goal is to have water get absorbed into one little ground there, this is going in the lake. And, you know, and that's just the way it's going to be, and if it's done right, then you don't have to be out there with herbicides that are also going to go in the lake.
Absolutely.
So anyway, that's my position on it, I.
So is that technology lag factor, right?
I'm not used to permeable papers this close to the lake, that, that's, uh.
Well, you're only talking nine.
Yeah, I don't know that they were, well, there have been some that have been presented.
Oh, this, this close, okay. You know, and there are different kinds of permeable papers, I, I, on the human side, I've discussed, oh, I'm sorry, that.
I was going to slap you.
Yeah, I, that, uh, the solution set for her problem, you know, you know, as she explained, she thinks this will take care of, uh, the needs, but you got me thinking whether, you know, with this space allotted and whatever that, uh.
Well, but it is what it is.
It is, it is what it is. And the permeable paper thing that you brought, that, uh, you know, I don't see environmentally this being a, a problem, but the coverage, uh, thing because of what, of the what permeable papers are classified as, that becomes, um, something.
This is a super majority vote.
Is it?
It is, yeah.
And county recommended the night.
Can I ask a clarifying question? What are the, this is a third structure. So it's the shed. And then I'm assuming garage.
Yes.
It's the garage at the house.
And the garage is at the house, but it's not an attached garage.
So the shed and the, it's just at the lake.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Like you said, these are tough with a road in between, and you can stay within the bounds of accessory structures, but.
It's tight.
Cold is cold.
Have we given, what's, what's our other? I mean, I've been given a field, I'm not very very, 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 it's for lot coverage. Was John, John cases?
That's the thing. It's a lot of coverage.
It's a lot of lot coverage. But didn't, what's John cases? So he had a boat, he's got a tight lot.
He has more space out.
He has more space in the back, right, so that's.
That's why I don't, it was a lot of.
Yeah. Well, we did have to.
Because the problem here is that the house, part of the property takes up a lot of the land side of the road. I mean, that all can.
Right now, it's at, um, 52.1 going to 53.3, I've seen that.
I guess, I guess one of the things that.
It's actually not.
You know, that's not a significant change.
Right, right.
But I think with the other having come through just so soon for this, I guess you really have to think more of it as the whole whole increase. Otherwise, you know, somebody could come back, you know, every year with 1%, 1%, 1%.
Where's the line, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing is too, I mean, like the lot coverage, is that are we setting the precedent, I mean, how? Like, we're pretty close to. I know we've given some in that range, not.
And we have feedback from neighbors? A neighbor on each side said it was positive.
No, we're talking about.
So if she were to replace this with a pile of gravel, that would be, that's not an accessory structure.
Gravel. That's true.
About green gravel.
I didn't.
There you go. That's what I was thinking about putting there. That's gravel, first stone, all that counts as a structure.
We're sure for the same board, yeah. Any board members south here? Ready to vote?
No. Yes. Um. I guess I would, I would actually like to know if we've, what variances we've given down in the area, personally.
Like what?
Like what variances we've granted in that area. You live.
We can certainly go after that.
I don't know, the only other thing you could take, I mean, if there was a ton of papers there, and you have what was left from, from the last variances, if this is an enhancement on what was there before.
Yeah.
That is something to consider, or if it isn't.
But they took it out.
They took it out, so now it's not.
Yeah, and then they were stopped, so that's why I'm trying to like, right, I mean.
I took it out, but then that 10 by 12 covered patio area was added to what the small structure was before.
What was? What do you guys?
We could go, uh, if, if there's more information we need to acquire, we could, um, we could table. But I don't know if there is, it's up to the words they decide.
The numbers are, are what they are, and we know what we're dealing with.
Well, the only, we were, the only thing would be, ha- have we granted something similar in that, in that area, that's the only thing we don't know.
Right.
Yeah, I, I know off memory, just because I haven't been to as many as y'all have. Whenever you started the 52, 53, that's.
It's close, right, I mean.
A lot of the discussion happens.
It's because that's after, correct me if I'm wrong, but for small lake lots in the RDO, the coverage was increased for those, you know, just theoretically, it would be 20% of those. They are wanting district.
But, but as a, like house, a crossroad, you know, I'm.
Considering my property.
Right.
But I mean, all, all of those, whether they're all on one side of the road or all on, you know, on the lakeside, that lot coverage was increased significantly to, to accommodate these small lots.
Well, and if you do the math out, the 40% is the maximum coverage, taking this to 53, three is a 35% increase over 40% of the 40%, so it's the 40% plus another 35% of that 40. So the, the, the substantial does factor in. But I'm stuck on the fact that this is from your vote, too.
And I'm, and I'm wondering if we've gone over the 50 threshold of other
We have.
properties in that area.
But only, I want to say 52 is the. And it was, it was a different, completely different situation.
You're, you're running into the situation, is it a, is it a structure? Is it a shed, or, you know, is the garage bigger, and setting up more of the lot space, is the driveway longer, bigger, wider? And I understand, you know, we're trying to stay within the certain parameters, but I, I just don't.
Um, you know, I guess would it help to get a little more input regarding, and I'm not sure, I think the environmental impact that they were looking at from the CB was just grass, no grass, favors. It's an interesting question that Dave raises, it's whether the overall environmental impact.
Is it better or not?
Is better or worse? Now, I guess one of the things is if, apparently with some heavy rains, there's been water flowing down over there, over the wall there. That in itself is a concern.
Can I, am I allowed to say anything I know?
You can go ahead.
Well, the neighbors and I fixed that situation, as I explained to you, they planted a bunch of, of grasses, I did, we both, our walls were all, we didn't have walls there, and now there's walls there, and we put drainage in. So we've done substantial work there for drainage problems, plus I just finished planting all those grasses there. And mulch, I mean, it's mulch, there isn't stone or rocks, I think.
We want to get any more information or a vote?
I'd be in my mind.
The information would be good for me, and seeing as we need, uh, four out of five, that maybe because, uh, that puts a little more it changes, it's a little bit.
One more research.
I'd want to be, uh, have a few more, a few more, a little more data.
What about you, Shannon? I don't know that I need any more data, but I'm definitely torn. I don't know which way I vote. I can make, I can argue both sides.
I guess the question is, are people, and double evidence about their vote that they would be published by having further information?
The two things, one would be comparables, the other would be if we could get a little more clarification, as you brought back to what you said, Dave, about, you know, hey, this, you know, you know, doesn't that count for something, these permeable papers? Sounds like the way, you know, yes or no, the way they're, uh, dealing, it doesn't, it really doesn't count for something, and in harmony, is, you think it should?
I mean, I think, um, since the town, the county has recommended denial, the vote has to be a super majority, so basically four or five. I'm getting the vibes here a little bit that people could.
What would be acceptable there?
Well, uh, but I think people with more information might be able to make their vote more comfortably, I guess. Want to table it? We have 62 days, but we can do it.
I don't know what other information I could get for you, if you were to request anything.
Might get some for us, and we need to probably talk, I'll talk to the environmental control board.
I looked on that list, too, I have a list of stuff.
Yeah, I, I'll make the motion.
You can say that now.
I can talk that one.
All in favor of putting it out till next time? Vote.
All right.
All right, so we'll get some more information and then we, uh, we'll read. I usually have to reopen the public hearings, I can't always end them up.
So there'll be another hearing next month?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we run out of order because you weren't in the room. Okay, the 3313 County Road 16.
It's, um, we haven't had a lot down in that area, it seems, so this has been pretty spread out. But for whatever reason, the, the way the house is situated on that lot makes a problem on both sides. It's very long. And it's tight.
We, the only way to pre-existing non-conformities, when people want to expand when they're already out of, you know, they're non-conforming, it's always tricky. And with a, a neighbor that's not on board, then we have some, I would say, uh.
Well, even with a neighbor on board, we've been, you know, to be that much closer to line, we've denied it before.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, they're not super close to the houses, but definitely is on them, and it's closer to line.
I guess county board, uh, county planning board, they review this, and, uh, I'm sure.
I don't think they.
Check out because it's on county road.
Thank you.
Yeah, they've, uh, cut back on what they were. Yeah, but if it's one variance, though. We have to find out about the county recommendation, because it would, I guess, a majority if they said.
Yeah, I don't see it.
In my development, um, we have all two car garages, but nobody can fit a uh, pickup in the car, because you just can't do it. And I assume, I don't even know what the standard is, maybe it's 20 feet, whatever, you guys are asking for a little more, but it's probably because you uh, want to put your pickup in the garage, that's, that's that's the, that's where, oh, I'm sorry, I can't.
I don't want to be the jerk all the time, so.
I mean well, but I'm out of control. But, but, uh, so it's, it's self-created, I would say, the, uh, the need for the, the variance, and that's what I had to do this.
I mean, in terms of it being a substantial variance, it's not a substantial change from what they have now, but it's a substantial with respect to what would normally be required.
This would be a different game if there wasn't the opposition. There are some valid reasons for the oppositions in which she presented. And I don't think it is that substantial, but at the same time, some things just don't fit.
Yeah.
To make it fit, and one thing to stay within the conform, the non-conformity would be one thing, but now you're going outside that realm and asking for big fan of no variance.
That's the real problem we run into with lots like this.
Right. And look how tight it is on both sides.
To build ones.
Well, they could have just laid it out.
And as the lady suggested, the, a long time ago, these were just details that didn't matter so much.
Right.
And in the modern era, with the pre-existing non-conformities, uh, now it's a bigger deal, and people buy uh, more recently, and they hope to have all their dreams come true, and, and with a pre-existing non-conformity, um, sometimes that's a problem.
You, you, you wonder if County Road 16 is going to turn into Doppler Beach and Falls Park.
It's great, you know.
This needs to, I have changed the, changed the lot lines, but, no, but I'm saying, because things get bigger and.
Or buried drainage plants under houses, right?
Or waterline.
Other counties.
They certainly could gain some storage space by using a shed, that doesn't give more space for the car, for the truck and car.
No, what else do?
Want to follow up?
Am I? Everybody good?
I'm good.
Shall the side setback varying for 20 feet, Brandon, Shannon Chauvier?
No.
Bob Hilliard?
No.
David Emery?
No.
Kelly La Boy?
No.
Chip Sal.
Okay, um, reasons of subdivision in relation to. Reasons of subdivision in relation to. It does. I mean, it shifts a little bit the character of the neighborhood, because you're getting right onto a lot line, or, you know, closer to a lot line. Uh, it does have a significant impact, I think, on immediate parcel to the north. It is a substantial variance given. Overall, it's already quite a bit out of conformity. In terms of the environment, I think it would be hard to do it without damaging trees. At least one, at least two trees. Yes, you know, it's self-created in the, you have two normal sized vehicles, you probably could do it adequately, not great, but. That plus a shed may solve the problem.
On how many variances it denied for extra storage in that sort of, because.
Yeah, but they have the option for storage part of it.
Wow.
Aside from vehicles, they have the option.
Which is increasing, they must increase it.
I think, uh, you know. Second, that judge and neighborhood is outweighs the benefit to the applicant. Anything else, anybody? People to the opposition by reasons.
Right, wow.
Yeah, both of them.
Although only one out of the three that she mentioned.
Okay, sorry. Friend of mine.
It is.
Basically.
I've got six here, I've got six days. Okay, um. Can't make everybody happy. Extension requests, interpretation requests. Are we hearing referrals from down there anywhere else? I'd like to, well, I'm sorry, Chris isn't here tonight.
Me too.
Huh?
Me too.
Right.
He'd have an opinion on the whole permeable thing.
Yeah. I, I, I think it's worth our holding that to them, I mean, I.
Well, there's two, two variances on that one, you've got the one point two to grant for her, she's asked for the one point two percent more.
Right.
And then the thirty accessory structures.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, I think all of this sort of. You know, the whole definition of a structure, what you're talking about.
Well, the reason that the E C B is, I sit with them as well, they have reasons made forth, turning a role of pavers in. Saying no to that. They require maintenance.
Right.
So if you do not maintain them, and you drag sand.
A lot of maintenance.
A lot of maintenance.
A lot.
They immediately pack up and they're, um, it happens quickly, so.
Same with the, the blacktop driveways, I know are, are, if they literally become impermeable afterwards.
That's what, that's, that was their reason.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. Right, if you're going to maintain them, how do you make people maintain them, yeah?
Yeah, and before you said that, I was thinking with the magic number, they, it was fifty three point three or something like that. If we could have whittled that down based on the permeable paver kind of thing.
Right.
It's hard to, hard to justify, you can't put a cart, a table and chairs in a ten by.
Ten by twelve, yes.
It's all covered.
Yeah.
Right.
That was a big issue before they wanted.
I, I remember, I, I was here, I do remember this whole thing, yeah. I like that when, I like that when she was done, she goes that you denied, and she looked at me and I was like, I didn't stop.
Are we still mic down?
Yeah, I was like, wait, what?
Uh, because I, the mystery when she was talking about what happened in the past, is that germane to, uh, what we need to know?
What happened was, she was given a permit to build the shed. After she was given that permit, then it was re-reviewed by town manager and C E O and another C E O. They all looked at it and said, whoops. Now, she has the paper in her hand legally, she has the right to build, they said she does. You can overturn it, town manager chose to overturn it, regardless of what was going to happen. So, you know, okay, you have to go before the board of the ban.
So clearly it wasn't dug, or it was dug bad at the time.
Well, but part of it.
By the way, are we live?
Paper, I remember, let's do recording.
Okay, so should we?
On that paper, it said.
Should we kick that on?
The additional part of it. They could rebuild the shed, when that wasn't the full coverage.
Right, and she had that on too, so.
Yeah.
I mean, rebuilding the shed was one of them.
Well, that's why I wanted to know more info, because she said that it was stopped, and I'm like, I don't understand, what, what was stopped? What, what part of what was stopped, and so.
And the shed was already poured, the concrete was poured, the concrete just came to us and discussed it. Concrete was already poured, they said we can't stop now, so.
Right.
Basically, they were told, go ahead, but she still has to come for a ban, sorry, it wasn't that much of a bunch for her.
Okay.
Unless you guys said no, and then she, she said at one point she wants to pay a fine for it. Right, no, so, yeah.
Alright.
That's another reason I wanted extended time, because I didn't know.
Well, I, yeah, I remember.
Me too, that was a good point.
I voted for that, for the variance. I mean, because. We really screwed up the whole thing. And I, and that, as much as I wanted to vote against it, I did not think that she should suffer for our, our.
I think I would remember that.
Yeah, you would.
Was I?
Yes.
Yeah. I was there.
Is that the law that the town manager can overrule? That, or, I mean, I'm surprised that you pick up on the town board.
Substantial like that, you can pull it. I mean, C E O can pull permit at any time, but then it falls on the C E O to say why, and, you know, throw his, uh, reputation out there and say, I screwed up, we can't have it. So, you know. Plus, the other kind you can do it easily is if we change the plans.
Yeah, I do, I do actually vaguely remember.
I can understand that.
The. Some of the parameters kind of, but I don't, you know, I don't know if I remember.
Because the, the building is. Permit was for. Wasn't covering the whole thing.
But she was taking stuff out, right, the, the pavers on that.
An unelected official.
Because usually that's the only time we ever allow anybody.
You did a pretty careful lot coverage assessment on that, you have the, what it used to be.
Before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The original set is.
I did see some of the original stuff on. Was it?
Forty nine.
So it's ready.
Yeah.
Was that, yeah.
But part of the deal on that was they were pulling the pavers, that, that was part of the. Concession for building the bigger shed, shed, is they were going to reboot all those pavers.
That's usually the only time we ever allow something like that, is if they're making an improvement to the parcel, you know, or keeping it under.
I guess we ought to talk to the E C B.
Good, I'm glad we did postpone it.
And, uh, it would be good if we could sell your interest in it. It should be their responsibility to find a similar, well.
It's actually still.
So I was like, I don't know.
She didn't take them all.
Can I ask procedural questions?
Sure.
Why do we need to continue to postpone? We don't. We have sixty two days to make the decision, the public hearing is closed. Can I change my mind and say, okay, I'm ready to vote no, Chip?
You know, that's kind of a good question, because I always wondered why do we have to vote on postponing, if we have.
We always have.
Yes, we could just say, I don't want to vote tonight. I'll let you know next week.
Yeah, we can just say, I don't want to, I, I would. You all surprised me when you voted on that, alright, that's the first time I'd seen it.
Right?
Um, the only thing I would say is that.
We're still in session.
We said we were going to hold off.
Right.
Well, this time. Already postponed it.
Yeah.
And so now it.
Now we know what it is.
We have to have a revote on retracting the postponement.
But however, for future reference, right?
I wonder what Chris would say.
I don't know, I'd be nice to have Chris.
It, it would be nice to have Chris, yeah.
Let's, let's, let's talk to Chris about that, but I think.
Because it did surprise me that you voted to, we're not going to make a decision tonight, if we just had said.
Well, I only voted because nobody else to, to save Bob.
Yeah, I've needed saving.
Because I, I don't, I don't know what the rules are for, I mean, we're, as long as we're in session and everything, can't we just decide?
If we have the sixty two days.
Yeah, we have sixty two days.
Actually, I agree with that, I think we should look into it.
Well, what I.
And I'm okay with, we're not going to lie to this poor person.
Yeah, well, I mean, being straightforward, I was talking about the E C B, maybe a little more information, uh, comparables in that area. Whether there are others over fifty, and I wanted the backstory if I could get it, so, so those were my three, I thought they were pretty good reasons, but I didn't want to get in.
Yeah, I didn't know all the details, and I didn't, wasn't sure, so I was kind of like trying to like draw it out, but I didn't want it to be thrown.
Yeah, well, the details aren't even, the backstory doesn't even affect me so much, but I know it's really the, this is a hard knowing lot coverage. But the permeable really threw me.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it really is that the, should we start considering permeable as not a structure, and is that just kind of a being ahead of the technology, just like you said, Kelly?
Right.
But if there's concerns with the technology.
I do know that the technology is not perfect, for that regard, but, but yeah, so the driveway maintenance, I did know that, that.
I didn't know it was that extensive.
It has to be done like yearly, like literally they have to put something on it that keeps it whole.
But you could almost make a case for taking a percentage.
Right.
If it's permeable.
Right.
Maybe you don't get full, uh.
Yeah.
Full relief, but partial or something.
Well, and. Change a percentage if you don't keep it up.
Well, and as technology, it, it go, as we go forward, you know, those things will be easier to maintain, so we won't really have to.
I was in, our neighbor put in.
Oh, yeah.
The permeable blacktop. And I've been really impressed so far now.
The one, two, two or three doors north, that's one we voted on. You put that in, yeah.
Don't make me go there too much. But I, you know, when it's really been raining hard, I've gone out and looked at our driveway, which is the old one, and looked at theirs, and there's really nothing.
Really?
Flowing down it, I mean. Right?
It's pretty steep too, there.
Yeah, it is steep.
It's a different kind of maintenance than what, what we're used to with the convention.
I'll just have to keep an eye on it for years.
Yeah.
Right?
I'm sure there's also, knows of how their bits install and.
Not sure, well, right, the product quality.
I don't know about quality control yet in that industry, I don't know much about it.
Yeah. Into several. Holding tanks, yeah.
You know.
I'm sorry.
We need to be regarding this whole thing.
Alright, do we have to record this?
The, the, we've got.
Oh, I mean, yeah. This is. Not specific.